Can I start off by saying, I may not be the coolest guy in town, but I was getting dressed tonight and I noticed, I bought this suit at Macy's. Macy's Men's in Manhattan Beach. I know I'm not, you know, it's not Hugo Boss, but it kind of fits nice, I like it.
Dress up okay, Mark. There you go.
So, I'm a member of the public, is that right?
No, you're the, no, because they're getting three minutes, you're getting more time.
Okay.
But 10 minutes, I mean.
We're having a public hearing tonight, and the reason I ask is important, because the last time I was here in November, there was a motion made by the council, supported by the city attorney, and the motion was to close the public hearing. And the city attorney said at that time, "We can reopen the public hearing with a motion from the council." So, can I step back and please ask you to make a motion to reopen the public hearing on this matter?
I don't understand.
I don't either, but it's what the city attorney said in November, before there was a hearing in January, so.
Mark.
It's important.
No, 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 what's important is that you're, this is your time right now to talk to us about the resolutions, and that we are giving you the fair opportunity here to do that. It's, we're going to have public comment. This is your special, I mean, your time as one of the owners that's involved in this, okay?
Thank you, and I appreciate my special time as an owner, but I want it to be proper. We're here in a city council meeting that has rules that need to be followed, and I don't think I'm wrong on that.
Mayor, I can address that. Yes, this has been properly noticed as a public hearing, so there's no need for a motion. You received notice of this public hearing, you can talk.
Okay, so in November, when you said, "We're closing the hearing to public discussion, you can reopen it with a motion," that doesn't apply anymore?
Not if you give notice.
Once again, not if you give notice of a public hearing.
Okay.
And so you received that notice of a public hearing, so you can speak.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burton has a question for the city attorney, hold on, Mr. Newman.
Mr. Burton, I guess it's just a technical question, does the council need to make a motion in order to reopen it, or does staff have the authority to reopen it?
No, the, not these.
In the bottom of the caution, I'm willing to make a motion to reopen it, if that's...
Yeah, no, it's not legally required, what was noticed was a public hearing.
Noticed as a public hearing.
No, I guess, no, what I'm talking about is, if the council made a motion to close the hearing, does the council have to make a motion to reopen hearing? That's my simple question.
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Now that we know we're properly noticed. I'm here before you tonight, I'm a small business owner in Manhattan Beach. I've been with this project for eight years now, and it's going to take a little while to get through what I got, and I hope you will accept my apology in advance. I wasn't able to speak at the January hearing in a prepared fashion, because that was noticed as a closed hearing, and all of a sudden there was opportunities to speak on new information. There's been lots of information released, I got it on Thursday afternoon about this project, and I think we've seen 600-page stacks of documents. I got an email from the city attorney, they said it wasn't released late. I'm not a lawyer, I don't know what timely and late is, but to get through 600 pages of documents that are rezoning your property, it takes some time. And unfortunately, I had a busy weekend scheduled, so I couldn't dedicate my whole weekend to that process. I think it's very important to note that nobody in this room, or nobody in Manhattan Beach, will benefit more from a good project than myself. That being said, nobody in Manhattan Beach will be more harmed from a bad project than myself. And I wish Reef well. We've been trying to work with them to come up with a good project. It's been a very difficult process, and at the same time, the city hasn't made it any easier on us. In reading the EIR that was released Thursday afternoon, I figured out where all my letters to the city have gone. I've been writing letters to the planning commission, to the city council, to the planning staff, for a year now, maybe a year and a half, and I never get a response. They're given to the EIR consultant, and then I read in the final EIR, "Well, these aren't EIR matters, so we're not going to comment on them." There were a few points in my letters that had to do with EIR, but most of them deal with zoning, because you are rezoning my property. Okay? So I'm glad to know where those letters are. And I want to be clear that this really is not fun for me. This has been an expensive, time-consuming process to defend my rights here, and it's not fun. Today, I'd like to talk about six different things. The facts and the myths of the project, the fiscal implications, problems with the EIR, the resolution requirements, broken promises and unanswered questions, and the legal appeal to the project. In fact, the local residents were not opposed to a smart expansion. I've already stated, nobody in this room, I would probably gain the most from a good plan. We understand the mall needs to be refreshed and kept up, and the plan should do what's best for the residents. We live here, we're the people that live here. Reef flies down from San Francisco every time we have a meeting, they don't live here. Any project should be well thought out to minimize disruption to the residents, the existing businesses, and neighbors. The parking, if you go around town, most people in Manhattan Beach think more parking is being added than the mall, that's great. I ask people, "What do you think about the mall?" "Well, there's going to be more parking," that's great. And then you explain to them that there's more shops being added, and the parking is actually going to be the same or less in parts of the mall than it is today. And they hear that, and they say, "That's absolutely crazy." And unprovoked, everyone tells me, "Fill in the ditch with parking, that'd be a great place to put an underground lot and a surface lot, why don't we do that first?" Well, that's not up to me. Reef is increasing the quantity of parking, sure, but the shops are going up at an equal amount, or even more. Right now, a resident can pull into Manhattan Village Mall, and they can look for a surface spot in one level. The plan you're considering tonight has nine different levels of parking, which reminds me, I live in a one-story house, but my bedroom's upstairs. Here's some facts about, it's a good riddle, isn't it? I got a one-story house, but my bedroom's upstairs because the one story's up. You know, I don't know why we hide the fact that we're building three-story garages. I met with Reef today, and they try and hide that they're building three-story garages. You've heard long and many times about a settlement agreement. We approved a plan with two-story garages, not three. This development has intensified, which required the three-story garages. That's not fair to us, okay? Here's the little-known fact about the mall, it used to have 4.6 spaces per thousand square feet of space. And then it was expanded in 2002, and the parking was reduced. And today, our requirement is 4.1. And our neighbor across Rosecrans, who I guess we're trying to compete with, I guess that's why we're going through all this, they have six spaces per thousand, 50 percent more parking. What wins in Southern California, it's cars. And if you want to improve your mall, you better give them cars. This is facts straight from the developer, from Reef. It shows you, in the mall area, there's 3.7 parking spaces per thousand square feet. Ralph's has it a little better at 5.4, and then Fry's, they're doing really good, but they're really not part of the mall, because they're separated physically and through parking barriers. Here's facts about the mall that the developer has posted before, and they may be a little off, because this thing has changed so many times, but the current ratio in the core mall is 3.7 spaces per thousand. After Phase 1, it's going to go down to 3.22 spaces per thousand. And then after Phase 2, it may come back up to 3.6, but it's still going to be less parking in front of the mall than exists today. And again, the point, they have six spaces per thousand. Our economic consultants seem to think they're doing a pretty good job over there. This was some new information that was presented by Reef in the January hearing. Again, it shows 3.2 spaces per thousand. This is a little blown-up version, because as we've gone through this whole process, these plans are so small, it's really hard for any of us to understand what's going on, and I guess Reef's done a good job to hide it from us with these small plans, but you can see core mall, 3.22 spaces per thousand. And here's a blown-up version even further, this is the lot in front of the building I own, 3500, it's a Palvera. It's between the Tin Roof Bistro and the Macy's building. And I would really ask you to take a good look at this slide, okay? Today, this lot has 477 spaces. 465 plus 12. This is what it's going to look like after Phase 1. So we're going to add 24,000 square feet of buildings, we're going to add 21 parking spaces to get up to 498. So when you take 21 parking spaces divided by 24,000 square feet, you get less than one space per thousand square foot of retail added. And you wonder why we're concerned about our building. We've made a large investment in Manhattan Beach. Our building is owned by 10 families that live in the beach cities, the majority of them here in Manhattan Beach. Some of them are retired ladies who count on our distributions to pay for their groceries every month, and this is a real detriment to us. Here's some more facts from Reef's own presentations. It shows you, LA centers, they go from 377 to 6.07. So, the core mall is going to end up on the low end of the scale. And they say, "The 4.2 ratio, it's misleading." Yes, it is misleading, because there's only 3.22 in the core mall. We're going to be here for a little while, so you might as well settle in, and I hope I can keep your attention. Again, from Reef, you know, existing ratios are below industry standard and competitive set. The parking, it's less than we need there now, so let's add more parking, let's not keep it the same, let's get more. Here's a little more history for you. And I wasn't around in 1980, but the mall was built then. In 1995, it was expanded by 8,000 feet. In 2001, it was expanded by 16,000 feet, and I know that 133 is wrong, this is based on the old numbers, it's 70,000 or 80,000 now, which is five times as big as 16,000. So it's a large expansion that's being proposed. Here's another interesting fact. Pat Gibson, the expert, in the last council meeting, has brought up, "What about our experts? We have to rely on our experts. Our experts have done a thorough job vetting this project." Well, in 2001, Pat Gibson worked for a company called KQ. He completed a traffic study for the city of Manhattan Beach. He convinced the city to reduce the parking in Manhattan Village Mall. So we went from 4.6 down to 4.1 spaces per thousand, thanks to Mr. Gibson from KQ, who's now of Gibson Transportation Consulting. He's back for another bite at the apple. He had such a good time last time, it's really not fair to us, the residents who live here. A 12 percent reduction is what we had in 2001, and people complain there's not enough parking now. All of this goes against what the residents and shoppers want. Shoppers want easy access to the stores, they want to be able to pull in front, and they want that front row space, sure. There are a few of us that park in the back and get a little exercise, but that's not everybody. Again, across the street, six spaces per thousand. I know, I know that's really getting tiring to hear six spaces per thousand, but think about who you're competing with. Here's a copy of the traffic study from 2001. I don't expect you to read it, it's too small, but it is highlighted there, 4.6 spaces is what we started with, but we lost that, we gave that away in 2001. Here's another interesting fact about Gibson Transportation Consulting. If you go on their website, and you click the "About Me" or "About Us" panel, this is what pops up. And I know it's again a little small, but it says, "We are preparing, or have prepared, traffic and parking studies for Reef Jones Lang LaSalle at Manhattan Village." That's straight from their website. The website makes no mention of working for the city of Manhattan Beach. This is the consultant that supposedly is hired by the city to look out for us. You've sat here in many meetings before and wondered how they backed into the numbers. I think this website kind of explains it. That's her traffic expert. Make sure we rely on him and get six spaces per thousand. We've heard some scare tactics, and if people run around town and say, "Apple is leaving," well, I think everyone in this room knows, "Apple is expanding in the mall, they're not leaving." Macy's is never going to leave Manhattan Beach, because they own their own store. They have probably zero rent there, because they've owned it since 1980. The guy from Macy's said, "We're doing good business in Manhattan Beach," when he was here, he was pretty happy, okay? Fry's had to send a letter to us in November that got everyone all excited and expressed their desire to stay. Personally, I like Fry's. I walk in there, I can get whatever I look for every time. It's not the fanciest store, the roof leaks when it rains, I guess that's probably because they don't have a long-term deal. But one of the requirements that Mayor Potem Power asked for is that we negotiate in good faith with Fry's to stay. So what we've ended up for is a requirement that they get three one-year extensions. And think of it, if you're in an apartment, and your landlord just tells you, "You're only going to have three one-month extensions," and you're done, it's time to start looking for a new apartment. And so we've given Fry's the message, "It's time for them to look for a new place to do business." You're squeezing them out. They're being squeezed out of Manhattan Beach. I'd like to go through some fiscal implications, talk about the studies that our economic expert did, talk about Fry's, talk about our dead soldiers, construction parking program, impact on construction on the existing mall businesses and adjacent businesses, and how much money will ensure Reef completes the project. Think of Sunnyvale, remember Sunnyvale. The city paid Mr. Cosmon $150,000. To me, that's a lot of money. I'm not sure what everyone else makes around here, but that's a lot of money. We've talked about this gold bar chart, and I believe I have my facts right, that this gold bar chart was done for Reef by this other consulting firm. And so it's been paraded up here, we've talked about it many times. The gold bar chart, it's a pie in the sky, it talks about a gain of 21 million, but, "Oh, if we don't approve this project, the sky's going to fall." Instead of the gold bar, I like to call this the Chicken Little chart. Cosmon, who is a real estate economist, didn't let the city know about what's going to happen to the businesses during construction. And then let's talk about Fry's. I've heard it from a number of different sources, that Fry's does over $70 million of business in Manhattan Beach. The economic consultant's presentations to us showed it at 40 million, which would hide from us the fact that we're going to lose big revenue when Fry leaves. The difference of 30 million is about 300,000 a year to the city. Our finance director, Bruce Moe, who gave some excellent presentations while I've been coming to the city, he could tell us what they're doing there, he would know. And the Cosmon Company should be privy to those numbers, if they're going to be doing an economic analysis for us, and get $150,000 for the residents of Manhattan Beach. I mean, we should have some real numbers that are backed up by real city data. Let's talk about what construction's going to do to the site. So, this is straight from the EIR. 122 construction workers come into the site daily. The construction parking plans, and I'll get that to you later, because apparently Reef has shared them with me, they've shared them with the staff, but nobody thought to share them with the rest of Manhattan Beach, or the residents here. So if we take 122 construction workers, we've removed 100, 270 spaces from the mall already to build these new garages, you get 392 less spaces available for shoppers. 392 divided by the entire parking supply is a 30 percent reduction in parking. The thing to remember is, this is going to happen in front of the mall. The mall, the sales are going to tank during construction there. Ralph's sales will probably tank, because nobody's going to want to come here while the construction is going on. There's a direct correlation in this construction project and a loss of tax revenue for the city of Manhattan Beach. And why that hasn't been addressed by anyone, I guess we're trying to sweep that under the rug, maybe that question went to the EIR consultant, and they put it in the back of the report that was just released. And I don't mean to be flippant, but I have asked so many questions that have never been answered. Let's look at this red bar chart. Sales are going to go down, and these numbers could be accurate, they could be understated, overstated, I don't know. I'm not a real estate economist, but they will go down. I have a good friend who's the manager of Becker Surf in Hermosa Beach, and when they did their little renovation of Pure Avenue, his sales tanked. And he tells me, "It takes two weeks for customers to know, construction has started, and two months for them to know it's done." He said, "Your sales are going to tank." He was down 60 percent. It was very difficult for their business. The lost revenues to the city over the life of this construction project could be 300, could be $3.1 million, lost revenue to the city. The lost sales at the mall could be $300 million. And when sales goes down, what happens to the minimum wage workers who work in those shops trying to sell goods? They get laid off, too. Dead soldiers, love this term, it's been bannered around for a long time. We've heard from Larry Cosmon that dead soldiers are our problem, they're tying up the front of the mall. But there's nothing in this resolution to resolve that issue. Before you, you had asked this question earlier tonight, "What's before us? Can we put conditions on this project?" Well, the beauty of the Manhattan Beach municipal code is, any project, and I'm going to get it wrong, but Director Thompson and all, I think it's any project over 10,000 feet is a conditional use permit. And you're free to lather on all the conditions you want. If they don't want to do it, they don't have to do it, but you can put any condition you want on. Okay? And I believe these dates are right. This is from some older marketing material, but, so, let's look at Citibank. You could reclaim that building in a year. US Bank, you could reclaim that in five, and five years is not very long. That gives you an opportunity to add a new little twist, a new little sprinkle, some ginger, to the mall every five years. To do something now to preclude these banks from being renewed, that would be smart planning. Dead soldiers. 3500 was a dead soldier. We paid zero tax revenue to the city of Manhattan Beach when we bought the building. The building also was half-empty, and we were denied use of our building for two and a half years. But, we bought the building, dead soldier, a dedicated group of local residents, small businesses invested in Manhattan Beach. The building was renovated, we didn't request any increased density from the city of Manhattan Beach, we put new tenants in the building, and now we have successful small businesses such as Tin Roof Bistro, Suzie Cakes, The Vintage Shop, Platinum Capital Group, and Dr. Rispler's Innovative Fertility Group. Today, the property is very productive for the city. It generates over 75,000 in sales tax and business license revenue to the city. That's a big difference from zero. And that's what we should be demanding out of our dead soldiers. Instead of just talking about them and laughing about dead soldiers, let's do something. Financial implications. Reef and Sunnyvale. I really didn't know about Sunnyvale, and I want to thank Mr. Kriegsman from the Oak Street Gang Group, Residents Association, whatever we want to call them. But I really didn't know about what happened in Sunnyvale. Reef formed a partnership with another developer in Sunnyvale. They signed a development agreement with the city of Sunnyvale, it was a 62-page legal document with over 20 exhibits. I'm sure Sunnyvale thought they had it covered, I'm sure they had the finest legal attorneys in the state of California. The city of Sunnyvale thought they had a stable financial partner in Reef. Sunnyvale, it's kind of similar to us, a 36-acre shopping mall, it's anchored by a Macy's, Target, and a Penny's. Reef invested $220 million of equity. 220 million. That's a hell of a lot of money, it's more than I got. They also took out a $108 million bank loan. As of March of last year, only the Target and Macy's stores were operational. Much of the mall consists of a construction site which work has stalled and it's quagmired in a legal dispute. The reason for the legal dispute is Reef walked away from the project. They defaulted on their loan, the loan was foreclosed on, and they threw up their hands and said, "We're not going to build this." So the Superior Court appointed a receiver, and again, $220 million was written off as a business expense. That would kill any of us here in Manhattan Beach, probably. City of Sunnyvale is just out of luck. But Reef is a $3.2 billion international Wall Street bank. 220 million, it's chump change to them. So when you look down your list of numbers that are being added up, that are guaranteeing they're going to go forward, I want you to think real hard about this. Can I ask, has anyone called the city of Sunnyvale? Any staff members? Our city attorney? Council members? Our mayor? Mayors like to talk to each other. Has anyone called Sunnyvale? I think it's a fair question.
I'll get my rebuttals later, too, Mr. Newman.
There's many problems in the EIR, and we've been discussing those for a long time. The alternatives in the EIR didn't contemplate the project that's going forward. The alternatives in the EIR were rejected by the planning commission. And again, we say, "Let's rely on our experts who brought this project to us." The planning commission spent months on this project, and I know we're relying on them, because we haven't gone into the detail that they have on the resolutions, on the EIR, or on the signage. The planning commission rejected these alternatives. There's nothing but traffic, traffic, traffic coming our way, and it's being swept under the rug like questions to the EIR. Construction, parking, staging, staging and phasing, again, I don't know why we can't see plans that show when these buildings are going to go away and when they're coming back for the residents. And I'm not up here just for myself, I live in this town, I have lots of neighbors, many people were here earlier. I know it's hard for them to stay at a long city council meeting. Again, the EIR studied four alternatives. Alternative B was the closest thing to this project, but it isn't this project, because alternative B didn't have Macy's in it. It was rejected by the planning commission because it didn't incorporate Fry's Corner. That was one of the stated goals of the project, and one of the big things they wanted to do. Didn't enhance spatial relationships, didn't promote pedestrian access, didn't maximize use of the site, and didn't consolidate the Macy's Men's store. The project before you today has the same faults as the rejected option, doesn't incorporate the Fry's Corner, does not enhance spatial relationships, doesn't promote pedestrian access. Again, the only way to guarantee Macy's consolidation is to do it first. And this is from the planning commission, our experts, we're relying on the planning commission, our experts. Planning commission hereby finds that each of the reasons set forth above would be an independent ground for rejecting alternative B. So they're not saying the summary of all the reasons, each by themselves would be a reason for rejecting it. And, by itself, independent of any other reason, would justify rejection of alternate B as socially infeasible. So, we're really at that point. Here we are with a de novo hearing, but we're relying on the planning commission. And so, if we're not going to rely on the planning commission and their recommendations, you really need to get deep into these EIRs to understand and approve them. But if you're going to rely on the planning commission, rely on them, and go with their recommendations that are included in their resolution. The same plan as the options... The same plan as the options and fatal flaws as Alternate B, the one we're looking at tonight. In the EIR, it says, "A complete parking program is to be submitted and reviewed prior to the approval of the Manhattan Village Mall expansion." Phase one is now scheduled to start in March. It's gonna end 28 months later in June of 2017. It's two and a half years of construction. And, and I'm thinking of my poor tenants, two and a half years of construction. And they get an addition of 21 spaces, but an additional 24,000 square feet going after those spaces, so that, they get a real parking reduction. But they've suffered through two and a half years of construction. And again, the revenues to the city will be down during this period. Pat Gibson has stood up here and he's said, "I don't make mistakes, Mr. Newman. I've been doing this for 40 years." Well, in his 2001 study, he studied more intersections for 16,000 feet than he did in his 2012 study for 133,000 feet. Okay? So, very deep, deep, deep in that new EIR, apparently, Mr. Gibson ran out and did some more studies. And, and there are other traffic flaws to this traffic study. But, we had a traffic engineer look at the study, questioned it, and on his questioning, Mr. Gibson added some studies on, on Rosecrans. But he was adamant, back in September, that he did nothing wrong. And in January 14th, he declared that all questions have been answered. Well, we got the answer on Thursday. More studies were needed. And it was buried deep in a 600-page staff report and EIR addendum. We got phase one complete. And let's use some common sense. I mean, what we're hoping for as residents is common sense and local experience. We want that from our leaders. Phase one doesn't require a Cedar Way. So there's no road or vehicular connection between the mall and Fry's. Nothing. The traffic report, though, it says, "All of a sudden, traffic's gonna go up out of the Fry's driveway when phase one is done." Fry's is part of phase three, no longer a part of this application. So, how do the cars get across the Veterans Parkway? The ditch, as some people call it? This is one of the many flaws in this traffic study. And, and I apologize, my graphics aren't so good, but you can see the 201 spaces, which is the, the lower-level parking, Veterans Parkway, the ditch. There is no way for a car to get from the mall to Fry's and leave those driveways. It's impossible. Absolutely impossible. This is from the traffic study. It, it shows those driveways getting increased traffic after phase one. And, that's a little bigger so you can read it. I'm not a traffic engineer. These numbers are slightly confusing, but that means traffic's going up. This is straight from Mr. Gibson's presentation to us. We're gonna have less traffic when this three-phase project is done. That's, that's what was, he stood at this very podium and told the residents of Manhattan Beach, "This project's gonna have less traffic than we have today." And again, I'm not a traffic engineer. There could be flaws in this. But it looks like the traffic's actually gonna go up 'cause Fry's isn't leaving, so 375 trips stay. We're adding space. We're adding Macy's. Looks like an 8.5% increase in traffic to me, which is significant. And I don't know how we ignore that. The Traffic Equivalency Program. This is being imposed on my property and, and I can honestly say, I do not understand how it works today. I still don't. I've been trying. There was supposed to be a presentation in November, and I believe one in January, to the city council about the equivalency program. It never happened. I, I would request that the council require the staff and Mr. Gibson to provide information from another California city that has used this program to change the parking requirements. This equivalency program is a major change to the city's zoning requirements. You, you can't find it in the municipal code. It's not there. It is not listed in the municipal code. So will the council approve an EIR and traffic study based on this premise that has not been explained? The resolution requirements. This is in response to the request from January. We wanna keep Fry's. We wanna do Macy's first. We want our onsite improvements first. We got private agreements, due process, downzoning, spotzoning. Fry's. Again, telling them you got three one-year extensions is putting a gun to their head and telling them to leave town. I don't think that's negotiating in good faith. I, I know council and Powell asked that we negotiate in good faith with Fry's, and, and I'm not sure three one-years extensions is it. Consolidate Macy's and guarantee it happens. Well, the, the only way to guarantee it's gonna happen is that you make them go first. They own their own land and building. They're not going anywhere. They've stood in this room and said they're doing good business in Manhattan Beach. They're happy. Their cost of doing business is very, very low, so they probably don't need the big sales. One of the dangers, and we, we see it in, in downtown Manhattan Beach, rents are going up so high that the retailers have a hard time making it. And so by forcing high rents on new tenants here, we have a danger that we're gonna put our mall in jeopardy. And people like to say, "I'm trying to kill the mall." I am not trying to kill the mall. By no means am I trying to kill the mall. I want it to survive because I live off this mall. That, that is how I make my earning. I don't want it to die. I want it to do well. Here's a, a, a chart that's buried deep in this EIR. And, I'm not entirely sure what it says, so I guess this is my chance to ask. But it says, "If Macy's doesn't expand, the developer can add 60,000 feet of other retail." And this is blown up or was highlighted in yellow from that chart. "In component two, one alternative development proposal includes 60,000 square feet expansion of the Macy's Fashion Building. However," and I added the red, "if the Macy's Fashion Store were not to expand, any amount of the 60,000 square foot could be developed as a shopping center retail uses while, while alterating the results of this analysis." I don't know if this is part of equivalency program. I don't know where it comes, but I, I, I wanted, I thought it was important enough to point this out to the council. Because it, it's buried very far in there, and I, I'm not sure what it means. Macy's put option. We talked a little bit about this one when our economic consultant was up here. But your decision seems to be heavily based on the put option. I, I got a couple of simple questions. Is it signed? Or is it just a non-binding letter of intent? Has anyone, the staff, economic consultant, city attorney, have, have they read the put option? I, I think you're in your rights to require a copy before approving this project. And think back to Sunnyvale. They had a full redevelopment staff who thought they had that city covered. Here we go through all this. And this was explained to you earlier, so I'm, I'm gonna go right by it. These look like big numbers. Some of them look like real big numbers. If, if you had me as the developer, those numbers would scare the living daylights out of me. Deutsche Bank Reef is a $3.2 billion bank. The amount's up here, right? It's like buying a cup of coffee at Starbucks for them. I mean, those numbers mean nothing. When you ask for financial security on your offsite improvements, they're a $3.2 billion bank. Why settle for 1.25% of the, the money? Hit two, 2.5. And when you say offsite improvements, don't forget that the Cedar Way extension, the bridge across the ditch, that's onsite. And that hasn't been incorporated by anyone in the city in, in any numbers. I don't believe, I, again, I could be wrong. 600 pages, Thursday afternoon, it, it's hard to get a grasp on them all. A, a simple pro forma of phase one shows them making a $30 million project just from phase one only. Now, if they lost Macy's, they'd knock off maybe 3, 4 million. And they didn't do the phase two, that, that probably wouldn't kill them. And then, their clever lawyers will probably figure out a way to make it a tax deduction. So it's not even a penalty to them. Here's the town of Sunnyvale. I feel bad for these people. And I know, we lost our Texaco at Sepulveda and Manhattan Beach Boulevard. It's boarded up still. We got a, an empty site next to the Wells Fargo on Manhattan Beach Boulevard. And, and I really, if this happens, I'm gonna be in some serious, serious trouble. And, and I don't, I'm not saying this is gonna happen here, but the reason you study history is to learn from it. So the resolution requirement. The city of Manhattan Beach required us, 3500, to enter in a settlement agreement with our neighbor Reef prior to allowing us to put one tenant in our building. We had a Starbucks that was supposed to go where Suzie Cakes is. Starbucks went through plan check. We were denied a building permit for Starbucks until we got an approved separate agreement from Reef. And the city staff, they say, "We don't recognize private agreements." But they sure insisted on it for our building and would not let us use our building. They wouldn't let us use it. The proposed master use permit before you tonight violates this same separate agreement that the city required. We heard Mr. Cosmon up here talking about the Korea and how it makes Macy's the king. The city is recognizing and respecting the Korea between Macy's and Reef. The Korea also governs Reef expansion, but it's being ignored by the city. Why it is Reef's not required to get our approval under the Korea is beyond me. To knowingly approve a master use permit that allows two of the three parties, Reef and Macy's, to gain economically by violating the terms of the Korea with a new master use permit, while the third party, 3500, little old me, our property is downzoned and it'll cause 3500 to suffer economic loss, is exposing the city to real financial liability. The way I've been ignored through this whole process kinda reminds me of the Jeff Dolan affair. It was a very messy affair for Manhattan Beach. Rules weren't followed. Processes weren't followed. Documents were hidden from the public. And, and I feel like I'm headed in the same direction here. To ignore recorded private agreements is to cause conflict and project delays. Resolution requirements. Due process. Throughout this application and hearing process, 3500 was not given due process by the city of Manhattan Beach. 3500 was limited by the Planning Commission to three minutes of public comment at the end of the hearings. Am I an applicant or owner? The status keeps changing. The last time I had a chance to speak in January, I always promised an answer. I guess I'm still waiting for that answer. Maybe someday I'll get that answer. After that hearing, my attorney sent in a, a letter to the city asking to be copied on all project correspondence. That was dated January 25th of 14. Since that date, I, I believe the only correspondence I've gotten from the city is the public notice of projects. And I know this resolution has been traded back and forth with Reef, the developer, many times. Why that wasn't sent to me as an applicant on this project is beyond me. I, I don't know why I'm being left out of negotiations affecting my property rights.
Mr. Newman, I'm, I just wanna confirm with you. I see here there's, okay, I just wanted to check that there's 14 more slides.
I'm getting there.
That's fine. I want the public to understand because I am gonna allow the public to speak after the developer too, but I just want them to understand how much is left.
Okay. And, and I apologize to the public for making such a long presentation here, but I've been locked out of this hearing process and my property is being affected. This slide here goes through the fact that Tin Roof's permit was held hostage until we had a settlement agreement done. I, I can go right through that one to, to make things go a little faster. Wouldn't it make sense to get cooperation from us and be consistent with the settlement agreement that was signed by the mall and 3500? I have stood in this chamber before the Planning Commission and before the city council and said, "I will abide by that settlement agreement." The settlement agreement called for, I'm gonna be cued again, one-story garages with a upper level. In plain, in plain English, we had two-story garages were agreed to, and these garages are three stories now. And, and we have not hidden that fact. We've been upfront the whole way through. There's requirements that you've put in my zone and that say, "I have to sign Reef's applications," that I'm forced to sign Reef's applications. That, that's illegal, last time I checked. Whether we're an applicant or not is relevant for several reasons, but it surely speaks to the accuracy of the process in the report. We've had veiled threats that all of our zoning will be taken away if we don't cooperate. We're trying to cooperate, but we also have rights that need to be respected. The resolution requirement, downzoning. So the city staff admits they required us to sign this application. Reef and Macy's are gaining valuable expansion rights from the city. 3500 is losing uses by right. We're losing personal services, travel services, commercial and recreation. We're losing banks. We have a small business and they've come before you here and, and expressed their concern about losing their parking during construction. The Vintage Shop. Their shop, if they go out of business, it, it would be a nice shop for a, a small barber or a small beauty shop, a seamstress, tailor. A lot of people don't get their shoes repaired anymore. I, I still do that. I don't know, I'm old school, but there's, there's many uses listed here that would be good for us and, and we're denied those uses now. Commercial, recreation, and entertainment is always, also being pulled out. And, and while you may look at this and think you're crazy, there's many people in Manhattan Beach that really like to see art films. And it's been a constant public comment through this whole process. And, and I don't know if someday we would have room big enough, but I'm losing the zoning right to do that. This zoning, it amounts to spotzoning of our property. It restricts a small parcel and gives it less rights than the surrounding property. And I'm gonna ask Brandt Duvern, my attorney, to come up and speak on this matter.
Hi, I'm, I'm Brandt Duvern from the law firm of Lewis Brisboy. And I represent the owners of 3500. You know, I had the opportunity in 2008 to negotiate this settlement agreement that everybody keeps referring to with my buddy Peter up there, sitting to my left. And when we did that settlement agreement, it provides in there, among other things, that the owners of 3500 have what every owner wants, what we all believe every American wants, which is control over their own property. And what that specific settlement agreement says is that the, the, the square footage determination, the mixes of uses in 3500 are, is up to the owners of 3500. And what the conditions of approval of this project do, and the devil's always in the details, is in 13-1 Roman numeral six, it says that there can be a limit of 28,000 square feet total of medical use. And that includes adding 7,000 more square feet. And then in condition number 18, it says, what we thought, what we always wanted, that you, 3500, have the discretion to use your property in the mix of uses of office, medical, dental, to, to whatever you decide that you wanna do. But then it has two conditions attached to it. It says, and we didn't agree to these, it says in there that you can only use the office space if the total square foot of office space does not exceed 98, 100, 98,100 square feet and that the parking requirements are met. And to most of us, it's a little bit of doublespeak. And what it actually says is, is that you ha, and now it's been changed. Before... that you had... And now it's been changed. Before, we had our discretion. As Mark pointed out, we could use our property for a variety of uses, and that's what we intended to preserve. But the way this is set up is we actually have lost that discretion because hidden in here is that we may have to build additional parking in order to use our property as it was promised to us and as agreed in the settlement agreement. That's why it's spotzoning because it pays lip service to our discretion, but in detail, it could subject us to many extraordinary expense of providing for parking. At the same time, it actually restricts us to not 19,000 in medical use, which we had the discretion... We never do that, but we have the discretion to use 19,000 in medical use. Now we can only use 7,000 total for the entire mall. And what I said in my letter that I sent, asked a clerk to distribute to you, is that from my perspective, we're not opposed to the project. But if you go ahead and approve this tonight, we are obligated to continue to negotiate in good faith with Reef. How are those negotiations supposed to go if you give them approval and they have no basis to negotiate for us, with us? As I was sitting up here for the first couple hours of this, and I noticed the discussion of the project, and there was really no mention of 3500. And that's understandable, but it's not in our interest because this project is not about us. It's about the entire mall. And I understand that, but we're the owners of 3500, and we want what any owner wants, which is to preserve our discretion. That's what we negotiated in the settlement agreement, and that's what the applicant has put into the conditions, that if you approve it, we'll downzone our property in a spotzoning. And that's why we want the city to still be involved in this and to not approve this tonight because we need you to help us negotiate an agreement with Reef that preserves my client's discretion. And that's the point of me being here, and that's why I sent you that letter. And I'm available to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Mr. Newman, you're going to... Okay?
Next, I'd like to talk about unanswered questions and broken promises. The Master Sign Program, the Planning Commission, I'm sorry. I'd also like to talk about owner and applicant, which we've addressed a little bit, bicycle center, the theater, and the equivalency program. In September, we heard from Mark English that Reef looks forward to presenting the Master Sign Program to the City Council. Presentation never happened. Master Sign Program was not approved by the Planning Commission. It approves variances to the city municipal code, and the council should insist on a presentation before reviewing. We also submitted what could be deemed a late letter. And I apologize, but again, this ordinance was provided to us Thursday afternoon. In here, it talks about how Reef gets signs, Reef gets signs, Reef gets signs. This is a Master Sign Program that governs my property also. There is no way to figure out what kind of signage I get. Can my existing tenants keep their signs on the building? Is there a proportion of the signs that go to 3500? It's just poorly written. It follows everything that's been done to date. And I would urge it's not approved because you're asking for future problems. Applicant or owner? I went through this. I'll be quick, but I'm still waiting for an answer. I read the notice in the Beach Reporter, and now it only lists Macy's as the applicant. I just, I can't figure out which one I am anymore, and my head is spinning from it. Going back to some of our other comments, which were submitted in a letter today, but the way these ordinance is written, they may not even apply to Macy's. There's a requirement to record this resolution against your property, but the only requirement is that Macy's, that Reef recorded, not Macy's, and not 3500. But I believe this ordinance supersedes and replaces all previous zoning that I have on my property. There's so many, so many sloppy details, unanswered questions, and potential future conflicts that are in these documents. The first planning presentation promised us that we're going to unite the Fry's Corner with the rest of the center, creating a new entrance off of Rosecrans. Well, we lost that. Gateway sign, I don't know what happened to that. I think we're getting a temporary one. I don't know. The Planning Commission spent many, many hours talking about a bicycle center and bicycle connection to the site. In this parking structure where the red circle was, was a 2,000-foot bike center, just like what they have in the Santa Monica place that was promised. That got wiped out from January to now. And I'm serious, the Planning Commission spent many, many hours debating this item. So let's rely on our experts, the planning commissioners. Broken promises, the theater. Having found a resident that's still, I mean, there's many still upset that the theaters were squeezed out. And Reef told us it wasn't their fault. They stood up here and said, "It wasn't our fault. They left, so that's the main reason we're moving ahead." Well, they made a deal to get Pacific Theaters out. We've showed you those documents. Time has proven these conditions to be false. The project does generate significant impacts. Construction is supposed to be scheduled to meet parking demand, but reality shows a 29% reduction in parking during construction. The internal and external circulation improvements, where are they? We're not complying with our Sepulveda design guidelines. I guess we're granting a variance to our Sepulveda design guidelines because it says projects should have right-turn lanes, deceleration pockets off Sepulveda. This project has none. Zero. Not a one. We talk about improvements to internal circulations. If you would study the plans and look at what a car has to do to get into these garages, it's not an improvement. And to get to the second floor, you have to wait for, and I'm sorry to our seniors, but you've got to wait for every little old lady to back out of her space so you can get by her? The Grove is a beautiful project because it has speed ramps, and you can go all the way to the top without waiting for one car. We don't have speed ramps. We have to wait for every car to get out of the way as we wind our way up these three-story parking garages. We were supposed to get improvements. They all disappeared. I'd like to conclude with Corey Briggs, and I may have to read some more of the conditions that are... There's really harmful conditions in this ordinance to me, and I truly apologize because I got this late Thursday. I had a packed weekend, and I've tried my best to respond, but how the developer gets the ordinance so far in advance of me, I don't understand. I feel like the hack, the facts are being hidden, again, reminding me of this Jeff Dolan affair. Where's the transparency?